This conference will now be recorded.
We are now recording.
Okay, let me begin by just getting a roll call here. Duncan Berry? Duncan Berry?
Unmute yourself, folks.
I'm here. Okay, thank you. Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick is here.
David Harris? David Harris? Here. Okay, Joe McPhee, I'm here. Mary Maslowski?
You muted Mary. Mary's here.
Can we get Mary? Get Mary. Okay. Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson here.
Arthur Rose? Here. And Bill Stokes? Here. Okay, we've got everybody. All right. Pursuant to Governor Bacon's March 12, 2020 order, defending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law's Chapter 38, Paragraph 20, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order, imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Howard Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance. Some members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to or view this meeting while in progress may do so by logging in or calling in as specified above on this agenda. Okay? First matter is a continued matter of PB 2019-45, Royal Apartments LLC as owner, Alex Biden, Representative, seeks approval of a multifamily use special permit in the Howard Center overlay district and a site plan review special permit for the proposed use and additional parking and other appurtenances pursuant to the code of the Town of Howard, Paragraph 225-51D and 51O and 225-55. Property is located at 228 Bank Street, map 41, parcel M4, in MRL Howard Center Overlay in historic districts, continued from April 14. Is the applicant or somebody representing the applicant present?
Ben Zender is on the line.
Please, please identify yourself.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Ben Zender, and I represent the applicant.
Okay. And do you want to tell us what you're looking for?
At this point, Mr. Chairman, I'm asking the board to vote to allow us to withdraw these applications without prejudice.
Okay. So the motion is to... Can somebody make that motion to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice?
This is Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. This is Craig. I move to close the public hearing for PB 2000...
Craig, I don't think we're closing it. I think they're saying they want to withdraw it.
Correct. This is... This is... This kind of goes back to before the COVID days, and I was questioning whether we needed to close a meeting before we voted to accept or deny a request for withdrawal. And as I recall, Charlene was going to check with Joe Powers to see if we could talk to the attorney. I don't know whether that's happened or not, but I didn't put the language in there. So I figured, can't hurt. Might as well just do it this way. And Charlene, maybe you can speak to... If Joe did talk to the attorney or you or somebody talked to town council, I don't know.
Okay. The motion is to close the public hearing, and I'll second that. And we'll have a roll call vote. Duncan Berry? Aye. Craig Chadwick?
Aye.
Dave Harris?
Aye.
You're with me, folks. Joe McPhee, aye. Mary Maslowski?
Aye.
Alan Peterson?
Aye.
Arthur Rose?
Aye.
And Bill Stokes?
Aye.
Okay. Now, Mr. Chadwick, do you have another motion?
Sure. I move to allow for the end or withdrawal without prejudice of case PB 2019-45, Royal Apartments, as requested by the applicant.
Second to second. Somebody got a second for that?
Dave Harris seconded it.
Okay. And we'll... Because of the system here, we'll do a roll call vote again on that. And it is Duncan Berry?
Aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Dave Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Joe McPhee, aye. Mary Maslowski?
Aye.
Alan Peterson?
Aye.
Arthur Rose?
Aye.
And Bill Stokes?
Aye.
Okay, that takes care of that. How about the next matter, then? Is there somebody representing the Eastwood Homes Business Trust?
Wait, wait, wait. Sorry. There is another request, I believe Mr. Zender has.
Go ahead, Mrs. Zender.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the board withdrew the... I don't... I'm not at my computer, but I think he withdrew the site plan review and also asked you to withdraw the special permit application.
Charlene, do you need to go?
No, it's one case. So it's closing the application. It's just closing or withdrawing the application without prejudice. It's all one application.
Okay. My other request is... I have one more request, Mr. Chairman. My request is that in the event that Royal submits an application for the same relief at the same location that the board vote to waive our application fee in the next matter.
Well, when you apply, we'll do that. It'll be in this record, which it always is. And then we'll decide at that time if you reapply, whether or not to allow it.
Mr. Chairman, there's a logistics problem there because when an application is made, they are required at the time they file the application to submit a filing fee.
Okay. But I don't see how we can waive the filing fee until we've applied.
Mary, you'd like to say something?
Go ahead, Mary.
Hi, Joe. We typically vote to allow it as long as they apply within 365 days.
Okay.
And that's... That's one of the motions available to you that I provided.
Okay. Somebody prepare to make that motion.
Joe, it's Mary. I'm happy to.
Thank you.
I move that... I move that in the event the applicants for Royal Apartments LLC reapply for a site plan review or special permit within 365 days, that the planning board waive the application fee.
Thank you very much. And I'll second... Who made the second?
Duncan.
Who did?
Duncan.
Duncan Berry seconded.
Okay. And once again, as usual, roll call vote. Duncan Berry?
Aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Joe McPhee, aye. Mary Maslowski?
Aye.
Alan Peterson?
Aye.
Arthur Rose?
Aye.
And Bill Stokes?
Aye.
Okay. That takes care of that. Thank you, folks.
Hi, Ben.
Next matter I have on the agenda is PB 2020-12, Eastwood Homes Business Trust. Is there somebody representing Eastwood Homes?
You need to read the whole notice into the record, sir.
Okay. Eastwood MBT LLC, trustee care of Eastwood Company, seeks approval of a modification of a definitive subdivision plan pursuant to Master Law's Chapter 41, 81K-GG, and Paragraph 400 of the Code of the Town of Howard for the subdivision known as Bascom Hollow, assessing map 97, Barnstable County Registry of Deeds Plan Book 675, Page 71. This property is within the RR and the WR overlay district. A modification is relevant to the Board of Health conditions only. And we'll hear from somebody from Eastwood Homes, please.
Hi, Susan Ladue and Bill Marsh.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So we're here with the modification of the Bascom Hollow subdivision that the board approved. It's an eight lot subdivision. You approved it in May of 2018. And we were allowed to ask for a release of four lots at that time for the community septic system. And with the understanding that the other four lots would be allowed to wait until the town sewer was installed. And we found out recently that the sewer will not be installed for the... Probably until another two years. So we approached the Board of Health, asked them to modify their decision, and they allowed the remaining four lots to have individual systems installed, and not on the community system that was approved, until town sewer is installed. And with the caveat that if town meeting approves funding for the remaining sewer installation this fall, if it doesn't, then we would have to put IA technology in each individual system. So I won't read through my... I'm assuming that you have the letter that I submitted, and you've read through that. But that's the gist of it. So what we're asking for is just the addition, basically, of the Board of Health condition that they put on this approval for the four lots. And I can read that to you if you... It's on the... I don't know. We each have a plan in front of you. But that additional condition would be allow the newly released properties to have conventional system on their own lots. And that if funding to complete this section of the municipal sewer is not approved at a 2020 special hall town meeting, that innovative alternative technology will be added to the systems. And we agreed to do that. And that's the basis of our request to the board.
Okay. Is there anybody on the board who has any questions or comments about the request?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. But Charlene, could we have her report?
Charlie, go ahead, Charlene.
Okay, thank you. As Susan Ladue mentioned, the Health Department, they've reviewed this. And basically, it's due to the funding shortage. A comprehensive fire management plan will not be completed for the original schedule. The revised environmental impact review proposes individual conventional Title V systems on the remaining four lots. After considerable review and discussion by the Board of Health, the board did vote to approve the proposal. And I'm not going to reread it because that was already read into the record by Susan. My own comments, the original plan and decision restricted the total number of lots. It could be developed to four. Board of Health has now changed that condition to allow for all the lots to be built on with a proper septic system. A note on the modification plan has been added to that to indicate this change. Number two, the original condition imposed by the Board of Health restricting development to only four lots is still noted on the plan. And it would be my recommendation that it literally be crossed out with a note added. Please, you know, refer to new Board of Health condition imposed and the date. And just for the board's information, currently lots three, five, six, and seven have been released for building purposes. Lot one will be the community septic system, which will now not be taking place because of the new condition imposed by the Board of Health. In my opinion, there is no need for a new covenant as the existing covenant is adequate. And I do want to note that because of the current COVID-19 emergency declaration and condition imposed by the Supreme Judicial Court, the appeal period for this matter begins until after May 31. There's been a toll on when appeal periods and those kinds of things happen. So the appeal period would not actually begin until June 1. And that is my report. But not that there's any public left, but you do need to ask.
Is there anybody in the public who wishes to be heard?
Here we are. Mr. Chairman, this is Craig. Thank you. I do have a question. And it's kind of curiosity, if nothing else. But what consists of, for a non-inventor, so in the simplest terms, what is innovative alternative technology that would have to be added to the individual septic systems provided the funding is not received in 2020? What is that?
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to respond?
Should you respond, or should we have the applicant respond?
It's an extra component that does denitrification of the sewerage that's going into the septic system. It's called innovative technology, and it's an extra step to denitrify what is going into the septic system.
So it's a furtherance or a improvement to an existing septic system with this added on to it?
It goes beyond Title V, sort of actual being like its own little sewer system.
Got it.
Not acceptable.
Okay. And then I guess this might be a question for the applicant. Is the... I'm going to digress a minute. I'm not a betting man, but if I were a betting man, I would bet that we are not going... The Town of Howard is probably not going to fund in 2020 the additional sewer work. I could be totally wrong, but that's just my guess. So...
Certainly not. Certainly not there.
Right. So I'm just wondering, does it make sense financially and digging up and building a... Putting the septic system in and then four, or five, six, whatever months are left in 2020 to then have to redo something to add this innovative alternative technology? So where I'm going with the question, does it make sense to do that now while a regular septic system is being built to just add that innovative technology now?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, it's something that we... Say, lot three... Or I'm sorry, lot two, we have under agreement. We're designing a plan now to have a system. It's a component that's installed right when the septic system's installed. It won't be a digging up and adding to it. It will be done as each lot is developed. The component will be installed along with the regular system.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Will that be the first... First house that you're building there on due?
We've already... Joe, we've already built and have occupied three houses in that subdivision.
I thought so. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else on the board have any questions or comments? Okay. So we need the motion on the modification, Charlene?
You need to close the public hearing first.
I move to close. I move to close the public... Who was that?
Mr. Harris.
Dave Harris.
Okay. And second to that motion? I'll second that. Who's that?
Bill Stokes.
Thank you, Billy. Please be kind enough to identify yourselves because we're on the record here. Okay. And we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder that the Rouse is an ultimate member is not eligible to vote on this modification.
Who is that, Mr. Rouse? Okay. Thank you. Okay. We'll have a roll call vote. Duncan Berry?
Aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Joe McPhee, aye. Mary Maslowski?
Mary Maslowski, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
And Bill Stokes?
Bill Stokes, aye.
Okay. Do we still need another motion, Charlene?
The next motion would be on the motion of finding facts.
Joe, this is Mary.
Go ahead, Mary.
I move that we adopt the following findings of fact. One, that there are no changes proposed other than the number of parcels that can be developed. Two, the modification does not change the fact that this is a division of land to single-family homes intended for use or same-family by special permit in the underlying RR and Water Resources District. And three, the Board of Health requirements will be met.
Do I have a second for that?
Second, David Harris, second.
Okay. And once again, we'll have a roll call vote because of the setup. On Mary's motion, Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Joe McPhee, aye. Mary Maslowski?
Aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
And Bill Stokes?
Bill Stokes, aye.
Okay.
Now, the... On the modification plan, and I do recommend conditions. So the number two...
Okay. Is that in front of you?
I do. I move that we go to approve with conditions PB 2020-12, Eastwood Homes Business Trust, Eastwood MBT LLC, trustee care of Eastwood Companies, a modification of definitive subdivision plan, PB 018-13, pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter 41, Sections 81K through GG, and Section 400 of the Code of the Town of Howard for the subdivision known as Bascom Hollow, assessing map 97, Barnstable County Registry of Deeds Plan Book 670... Page 71. The property is within the RR and the WR overlay district. The following conditions are imposed and required to be submitted prior to endorsement of the plan and covenant. These are suggested... Sorry. The conditions are in the existing code of Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, Book 31370, Page 49, shall run with this modification plan. B, this decision shall comply with the conditions imposed by the Howard Board of Health dated March 26, 2020, and reported at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, Page 798, Page 113.
David Harris, second.
Thank you. And once again, you're listening here. I'm shifting through my papers. Roll call. Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye.
Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Joe McPhee, aye. Mary Maslowski?
Mary Maslowski, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
And can Arthur vote on this?
No.
Charlene?
No.
Okay. I didn't think so. And Bill Stokes?
Bill Stokes, aye.
Okay. You're with me. I think that does it, doesn't it, Charlene?
No, sir. You have the meeting minutes of April 28, 2020.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm talking about that case. I know that.
Thanks very much.
Night.
Good luck, folks.
Good night.
Bye, Bill. Bye, Susan.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of April 28, 2020 as written.
Duncan Berry, second. Okay, and roll call. Duncan Berry?
Aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
Aye.
Please identify yourself.
David Harris, aye.
Thank you. Joe McPhee, aye. Mary Maslowski?
Mary Maslowski, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rose?
Arthur Rose, aye.
Bill Stokes?
Bill Stokes, aye.
Okay. And then the next matter on the agenda is a discussion on the draft amendment to the multifamily dwelling related bylaw. You want to talk to us a little bit about that, Charlene?
Yes, ever so briefly. Some of you may recall, it was probably a year ago after last town meeting that we started talking about different zoning amendments that we might be looking for in the future. And amendments to multifamily was one of them. In my opinion, the existing bylaw is incredibly restrictive. And... I was going to postpone. I started working on this. I had not been working on it only because of time constraints, working on other things. But I guess one of the positives of what we're going through is I've had a little more private time, you know, working without disturbances private time, you know, working without disturbances where I've been able to focus on, on several different things. So this is one of the ones that I put together. Um, I don't expect the board to get into a heavy conversation, if any, tonight. I wanted to get this out to you. I wanted to get it out so people can see it. It's on the town website. Um, I have sent this out to a couple other, uh, planner friends and, and housing folks that I know. And, you know, this, this is just the very beginning of, of what this document is and could be.
Now, you haven't sent us a draft yet though, have you?
It was in your packet.
Oh, that's what I'm checking, but good for you. Hang on. Just give me a minute. I found it. All right. Anybody on the board have any questions or comments about, uh, the proposed draft that Charlene sent to us?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Craig. I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, in watching the, uh, selectmen's meetings, um, really since this COVID thing, um, I know that they're working diligently to, they've changed the date of the annual town meeting to June, I don't know, Mary or Charlene held me up, 26th, 22nd. And I know they were working, was it last night or last week, on paring down the warrant articles and they're gonna.
This is not intended for this, this town meeting.
For this meeting? Okay. I was going to say, it's likely the way that they were talking that they're not going to take up any matters that might provoke, um, lengthy discussion. Uh, they're just going to try to keep it at the financial matters, um, so that they can keep it short and sweet because of the whole issues of attendance and numbers of people in quorum and so on and so forth. So I won't belabor it, but in, and I'm assuming there may be, um, a second annual, or whatever it's called, uh, another meeting, uh, at the end of 2020, uh, for the business that didn't get done at this one in June. Would this be something, Charlene or Mr. Chairman, that you would see coming before that meeting, provided that there is one?
Yeah, I, I, I watched that thing last night myself, uh, and, uh, I, I guess my, my answer to you right off.
Good answer.
Yeah. There's a very high chance that there will be a town meeting sometime after the summer is, is our guess because there are a number of other items which are going to need to be addressed. We have, um, two zoning amendments that are on the town meeting warrant. Those actually may be pulled in which case, and you have a continuing public hearing on the expansion of the industrial zone on the 28th of May. Um, if those are pulled, um, the board on, on the 20th of May would simply make a statement saying that, um, these are not moving forward in time, and if they are going to, it will be re-advertised in a new public hearing held. Um, even the one that you already held on essential services, um, that may very likely be pulled. We, until we know the final legislation that, um, you know, whether or not non-fiscal items are going to be able to be on a shortened town meeting agenda. That's what we're waiting to hear. But, you know, quite honestly, it does make sense to, to deal with those things, financial items that are, are the operation to happen first. So this could come up along with hopefully the DCPC zoning at the fall town meeting. And I am.
Is there anybody? Anybody have any questions of Charlene with regard to that? Okay. And Charlene, uh, your, your memorandum of March 23rd, um, including some information from Amy Questel, do we have any reason to talk about that tonight?
Uh, no, that was on the agenda. That was on the last agenda, and you, you felt it wasn't necessary.
Okay. I thought so, but I want to make sure. Okay. Anything else?
If I might, a couple things. One, your next meeting is May 28th. I will not be on that meeting. Um, I was supposed to have surgery back in April. It got canceled because of the current conditions, and it's rescheduled for May 28th. If I didn't take that.
Wonderful.
It was going to be months from now. I said, I'll take that date. So I am trying to find out who is going to be covering for me because not only am I your staff person helping you with, with your agendas and all that, but also I'm your, um, your organizer operator of the meeting and, um, you know, making sure people's names are on there so everybody can see. So we need to figure out who's going to do that.
Assuming we're, we're still doing them this way?
We're probably still going to be doing them this way for, for the near future, yes.
I understand. Okay.
So the 28th, you have a meeting, and, uh, you, someone will be here. I'll, I'll campaign med.
What, what does the agenda look like for that meeting, Charlene?
For that meeting, uh, you do have the continuation of the public hearing for the industrial zone change. Again, if the selectmen pull it, um, then I, I will put right on the agenda that this will not be moving forward at this time. You would simply vote to, to close the hearing and take no action, um, on that matter. You also have two approval not required plans. And there's one other minor thing, and I can't remember what it was. It's, it's nothing, um, oh, yeah, it's nothing crucial.
Charlene?
Yes, sir.
Charlene?
Yep.
Um, how about, how about the young lady in your office there, your number two lady?
Elaine, um, she will, will have to see whether she's in a position to be able to, 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 to cover this. Um, we'll have to wait and see.
All right. Between, certainly before day 28, between in the next week or so, you and I can talk, and, and maybe you and I and she can talk, and, and we'll figure it out from there.
Well, no, it's got to come down from administration. It, it really, with all due respect, sir, it, it has nothing to do with, with you. Um, it's, it's, it's strictly what administration is, is going to do. Um, if I had my, um, my selection, um, and it's already been in an email, I would love for the town engineer to be able to cover that meeting for me. Um, you know, we have to wait and see who, who they assign. Um, I already, when I found out about my, my, um, uh, my surgery, um, you know, that was the first thing I did. I sent an email to administration and included, tripping in on that email. So I'm just waiting to find out. Uh, we'll definitely find out well before the 28th. Everything you'll need for that meeting will, will be done prior to then. So, um, we'll, we'll get somebody. It'll, it'll happen.
All right. I, I, I just, you know, she's been a, a member of our, part of our department for a long time. Seems to me that you ought to be able to do it, but you and I can talk about it. Okay. Is there anything else? Any briefings and reports by board members? Nearly none? I'm ready for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Craig Chadwick, you're moved.
Second, Duncan Berry.
Okay. And a roll call. Duncan Berry?
Aye, Duncan Berry, aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
David Harris?
David Harris, aye.
Joe McFarland, aye. Mary Maslowsky?
Mary Maslowsky, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Arthur Rouse?
Arthur Rouse, aye.
Bill Stokes?
Bill Stokes, aye.
Okay, folks, we'll talk again on the 28th, and thank you all for being so cooperative.